Carroll City Council Meeting is now in session. Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? The Pledge of Allegiance.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please note everyone is in attendance. Our first item this evening is the Consent Agenda, which is approval of the minutes from the December 18th meeting, approval of bills and claims. We have no licenses and permits this evening. We have some appointments listed with the following: council approval and appointment by the council, and then appointment of the 2019 fired department officers. If there are no questions or anything with regards to consent agenda, I'll need a motion to approve. I would just prefer the consent agenda. Second. We have a motion and a second. If there's no further discussion, we'll go ahead and vote please.
Seaman?
Yes.
Sasek, Dirks?
Yes.
Katz?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Fluschner?
Yes.
Question is approved.
Thank you. And the next item is oral request of communication from the audience for things that are not on the agenda. Seeing none. Our next item is a proclamation for mentoring month. In this month, this proclamation states, "Whereas Iowans serving from all walks of life as mentors to youth across the state have given their time, talents, and energy to improve the lives of all youth, and whereas children and youth in mentoring programs greatly benefit from the guidance mentors offer, these programs help raise grades, self-confidence, motivation in school attendance, and whereas mentors are compassionate volunteers with broad areas of knowledge and expertise that serve as role models and build positive relationships with the young people of Iowa, and whereas mentors are doing their part to improve the health and well-being of our youngest Iowans by helping them become productive, caring, engaged adults with an unlimited future, and whereas the Iowa Mentoring Partnership works to increase resources dedicated to mentoring, promote quality standards for mentoring programs, and expand mentoring opportunities tailored to the needs of all youth." And now therefore, I, Mayor Eric Jensen, do hereby proclaim January 2019 as Mentoring Month in Carroll. Do you have anything else to add?
No, I've never been to my... This is my first time here, so...
I'll tell you what we'll do. I'll sign this one for you.
Okay.
Need a photograph or something from there. Okay, come on up there so I can get this to you.
I brought along, these are two of our mentors in the program. I'm from New Opportunities. I know a lot of your faces because I worked at the cleaners for a long time. So I just started in October, and I'm just really working, and this was a step that I thought would be really important, to get this program out. I have three kids, two that have been through the school district, and one that's still in the school district, and this program is just amazing. And I just want everybody to know about it. So I have Sam Murray here with me. She is with the school-based program at Carroll Public Schools.
Yeah.
And Steve, he's with the community-based. Because we have a school-based and community-based program, so they came along with me tonight as well, so...
Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
We'll get a picture and you can hand this after we're all done.
Okay.
Take this with you.
Okay, awesome.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you back. Thank you. Thank you again.
Awesome, thank you so much.
Have a good one. Thank you. Our next item is the public hearing on the matter of the adoption of a proposed Carroll Urban Revitalization Plan. And Mike, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is time and place for the public hearing on the urban revitalization area in District. The council's been considering the creation of an urban revitalization area for a number of months, actually extending back to August of last year. Based on the discussion at several council meetings, staff did develop an urban revitalization plan. This was reviewed by the city council at your December 10th, 2018 meeting. The council did approve a resolution at that point determining the necessity in fixing the date and time for a public hearing on the proposed urban revitalization plan. Staff did publish notice on December 13th, 2018 of this public hearing in the Daily Times Herald, and also mailed notices to all property owners within the proposed district required by law. Staff did receive one written comment on the proposed Carroll Urban Revitalization Plan, and that was included in the council packet. As an overview, the plan creates an urban revitalization or economic development area in order to provide tax abatement for qualified improvements within the district. I would note that under urban revitalization law, there are two different types of areas that can be created. One is the economic development area that we're creating in this case, or a slum and blight area, which is not the case. We're not creating a slum and blight district. The proposed area generally is an area with Grant Road on the north side, or excuse me, east side, 18th Street on the north side, US 71 on the west side, but also including the area around Maple Park. And then the south boundary is kind of irregular, but generally Bluff Street to Main Street to the middle of the Raccoon River, and then to Clark Street back to Grant. The proposed district urban revitalization plan proposes to provide two types of tax abatement. First is for residential properties. It would abate the first $75,000 of actual value added by improvements for a period of five years. And then for multifamily residential consisting of three or more units, it would be an abatement of the first $75,000 of actual value added per unit up to five years. The proposed plan and availability for tax abatement within the area would expire on July 1st of 2029 as drafted, unless the termination date is either terminated earlier or extended by the city council on a later date. The public hearing on the proposed plan is tonight, but there's no action the council will actually take on the adoption of the plan at this time. There is a 30-day period where a petition could be sought for a second public hearing on the proposed plan. And at that point, either in the future if no petitions received or after the second hearing, the council would consider adoption of resolution, adopting the proposed plan, and then consider the adoption of a resolution designated an urban revitalization area. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions the council has or recommendations the council should hold the hearing this evening, take public comment, and close the public hearing. Thank you.
It is not, it's zero to $75,000, right? It's up to $75,000?
It's up to $75,000.
If you read this, it says on the first $75,000. Makes it sound like you gotta do $75,000.
No, it's up to $75,000.
Or should we word that, is that?
We can review that, but...
Because if you read that, it sounds like you gotta do $75,000. Option 1 and option 2.
Yep. Yeah, I think you're, it's, but it is for that first $75,000.
Up to $75,000.
Yep.
And that's a value added to the property.
Correct. So there are some things, and we had a number of calls and questions. In fact, it came in on a Monday thinking I was gonna have an easy day. My phone rang off the hook all day, but that was a good thing, I liked that. The first question people ask, well, you know, I've been wanting to do siding or put a re-roof on my home, you know, will that qualify? And generally, those maintenance items don't add value to your home. So if you re-roof the home or add siding, that doesn't add taxable value. So it's only looking at taxable value, so it's things of adding an addition, adding a garage, those things add taxable value. Take an existing home that's in dilapidated shape, doing improvements, making it livable again, adding it, getting new value added. I mean, those major improvements, yes, that would qualify, but those maintenance generally wouldn't qualify.
What if you had unfinished places or didn't finish?
That would typically add that.
As long as it increases the assessed taxable value.
Correct.
Can you take things like an old tattered garage and do it have, tear that down and build a new one? Yes.
Yeah, because again, that typically doesn't add taxable value.
You can remediate things on the property. Okay.
And through the discussions with council, I mean, the goal was to take that burden that a property owner may be reluctant to take on improvement because they're concerned about increasing the tax value, and taking that burden at least away from the first five years.
So increasing the tax value is a county thing. Should they acquire, the person that's interested in this, should they acquire to the city if it's gonna raise, or should they go to the county and say, if I do this, we'll raise my tax value? Or should they go to?
I mean, typically you'd wanna talk with the assessor, that'd be your first step. Now, when you're applying for the tax abatement, there is a form you have to fill out. The council will review those. Typically, as long as you're within the district, you're doing a qualified, your residential property, the council will approve those. And then that goes to the tax assessor ultimately to sign off on that, yes, this increased that.
And I think in here, they've gone through what needed to be done, how to fill out the application.
Yep.
Was in there too, and it states. And then this basically is, it was sunset by itself in 2029.
Unless the council takes an action to either terminate it earlier or to extend.
Are there any questions from the public? This is the public hearing.
I have one just on like parking lots or replacement on existing apartment complexes. To replace them, I don't know if they...
I mean, typically, again, if it's just a maintenance item, so if it's an existing parking lot, you're replacing with a parking lot, it really doesn't add taxable value. But I mean, it'd be a question ultimately with the county assessor, you'd wanna have a conversation.
With the sunset in 2029, and then there's the five-year abatement, does that mean someone would have up until 2024 to initiate the improvement to get all five years of the abatement?
It's a great question. You would have to apply by July 1 of 2029, and then you'd get the five years after that. So this is when it would end the period that you could actually make application.
So they can still receive tax abatement into like 2022?
Correct. Yep.
Any other questions? Could you just review the process of what they would, what someone in the public would need to do to request a second petition?
It has to be signed by 50% of the people within the area.
50% of the people in the area, okay. Get 100 signatures, why not? You need 50%. All right?
One last question.
Yes, sir.
If you received a letter, does that mean you would be eligible for the abatement? Or did you send the letter to people within a certain distance of the area as well?
We sent it to people within the district. And so, one of the... It's a good question, because there's kind of two different components in this. There is establishing the urban revitalization area, and then there's adopting the plan that affects the area. So the council can change the plan time to time. Again, they can extend the date or end the date earlier. But within the area itself, they can't make changes to that area without going through this, sending out all the notices, having a public hearing, and whatnot. The council could change the incentives over time. So if they wanted to, for example, add a commercial abatement in the future, they could do that. If they wanted to remove multifamily but keep residential, they could do that. So the plan itself, the council can make changes from time to time just by simple resolution. But it's the plan, it's the area that people receive notices for. So if you received a notice, you have some property, and there's actually a, your parcel number is on the back of it, so you can tell exactly what parcel would be affected or is in the proposed business.
Any other questions or comments from the public? If not, it is 5:31, and we'll close the public hearing. And since this is a non-actional item, that item is completed. And with that, we would move then on to ordinances, and seeing none, our next item is resolutions. And we have the 2019 Community Development Block Grant, Owner Occupied Housing Rehabilitation Grant. And Laura, please.
Do you wanna do the introduction, or do you want me to? I have a question.
You got it, okay, sorry.
Good evening. I'm Carla Giannini with Region 12. Thank you for having us here and looking at this. As you know, a couple of years ago, the city started the process of looking at running a Community Development Block Grant. And that is to provide owner-occupied rehabilitation to low-to-moderate income residents. Low-to-moderate income residents are those that are factored at 80% of your area median income. So in a family of one, that's gonna be $38,000. A family of four, it would be $54,250. This is a, program is designed to try to help towns in rural Iowa maintain their aging housing stock. A lot of communities do a good job of, you know, getting the new developments in and getting the new housing, but we also have to be mindful of what's already there, and let's take care of it, and let's preserve it, because the number of houses over 75 years old in Iowa is staggering. So with that becomes, you first have to locate a target area. Your target area is based off of several things. There are seven scoring criteria in the application. The target area is going to indicate three of those scores. So it's gonna affect almost half your score. You wanna have the right combination of low-to-moderate income families in your target area, the right number of houses so that you do have an impact on the area, which means if you go into an area of your one census tract that's at 71%, but it has 300 and some houses, your impact for six projects is basically nothing, and you would score zero. And you also have to have enough homeowner interest in the project also. So those three things. And after a very long and extensive process of trying to get your income surveys and find enough interest in the program to submit an application along in the right things, this is the three areas that we found. And we started in that Grant Park area, went south of the hospital, almost to Grant Road on the east, and, oh, I'm not a Carroll native here, so let me turn this around, and to the park area on the west. So we started with a very, very large area. And after, as each survey was brought in, it was mapped, and the numbers were analyzed, and that is how we came up with this area. Any questions? Okay. So to move forward with your grant application, which is due April 29th, there are a couple of things that you would need to do. The first thing would be to approve your target area. The second thing would be to authorize procurement for technical services based upon the grant award. The technical services is all of the inspections and the paperwork that go with the inspections to meet the federal criteria. Region 12 would bid on those services, we do them for all the towns, and we have two in-house, myself and Nancy Mulbauer, that carry the LED certifications to do the visual risk assessments. Those technical services are paid for by the grant, not the city, by the grant. I went back to the seven categories of five points apiece. One of them is readiness. Having your technical service provider already procured for will up your points in the readiness category. That's why we ask the cities to do it prior to the grant application contingent upon award. Okay? So that's the second thing that we need to address. The third item also goes into those readiness points. When you started two years ago, this was not a scoring criteria. It came into play last year. As things become more competitive for these grant funds, in the past, you could take a survey and say, look, we have 23 interested households, isn't that great, and we're only asking for six projects. That's not good enough anymore. They want you to come in and ask for six projects and have at least six income-verified eligible applicants. So we're having to do all the work upfront before even issue the grant. So what Region 12 is doing for the cities is we will do that whole process. We will run your affirmative fair housing, we will do all the marketing, we will take all the applications, income-verify them, so that when we go to the application, we can say, we are asking for six projects, and I like to have eight verified applicants, because I want five points. So the city will need to make a decision if it would like to do that portion of the process to increase its points in readiness. Yes, it does cost $100 per file upfront. On the flip side, when they change that, they also change the scoring criteria for your city match. In years past, to gain the five points, you needed $11 per capita, which would've put the city of Carroll somewhere around 100, 110,000. Is $11 per person. Probably not something you wanted to put in your budget. Match is no longer a scoring criteria. I like to ask the cities to give something, because there's another category called community involvement, and that will get you some scoring there. But since the city's obligation in the match criteria is way down, they're offsetting, I think, in the state with the applications. That was kind of a general broad overview of the three things we need to settle tonight. The first is probably the target area, if no one has any questions. The second is the technical services. Any questions about that?
What's the process for that again?
The process for procuring for technical services is Ashley from our office would send Laura a packet. We have developed a, here's step one through 10. Since we will bid on that, we can no longer do the process for you.
Okay.
It gives you a website, you would have to publish it. It gives you a template for your procurement guidelines. Please let me know when you publish it, so that we may bid on it. And then it's documented in the application.
So we'd have to fill that out. The city fills it, not you guys, okay. I guess that's part of the list, correct?
Correct. And that will cover, as I said, all of the inspections for the processes, from the initial inspections to the specification writing, contractor walkthrough, midpoint inspections, finals, and the paperwork.
Even though some of these regions are in our urban revitalization, they will still qualify for this also, correct?
Yes. Actually, that's kind of a nice thing. Most of the work that we do is type of the maintenance. They have to meet energy efficiency or life safety issues. So we're looking at roofs, siding, windows, electrical panels, and my favorite thing is for elderly people to take that bathtub out of there and replace it with a walk-in shower, and that we're good for another five years. If you're new to this, the grant funds on the homeowner's side is in the form of a five-year forgivable lien. They live in the home for five years. Every dollar up to $24,999 is forgiven. Can I answer any other questions about this?
Yeah, those are more like maintenance issues and stuff.
Yeah. They can't use this money besides just maintenance?
No, Region 12, we write the specs according to what's called the Iowa Minimum Housing Standards. So there is a guideline of priorities. So the first thing we're gonna look at, so no, there's no remodeling, there's no adding a garage, not even probably a breezeway from the house to the garage.
If it eat new siding or new roof, that takes priority over adding a garage or a...
We would never add a garage in any circumstances.
What if the home's out there for five years? I mean, what if they're gone or they pass on? Is it just a lien on the home?
It is a lien on the home, and the portion that is not paid for would be due and payable upon the sale of the house. And then it would go back to the state and go into that.
Have you had some other communities where this has worked out pretty well around?
Yes. Currently, we are working in Jefferson, Scranton, Auburn, Shaler. We just finished Early. They applied for four projects. We managed to run right through them and ask for an amendment from the state for another project, and ended up doing seven in their town. The city of Manila applied for six. We received the first GUT rehab pilot program in Manila, ran through our first six, got another amendment, and will actually help nine people in Manila, so you could contact them. Templeton is just starting up. The city of Menlo is about halfway through, so we have eight of them going right now. Nine. Manila's not done for sixteen.
Is there an application window from the first date to when it's done, or?
Three years.
Just three years is all you know?
Yeah, three years. Applications are due the first part in May. We expect awards by July 1st of August. Contracts wouldn't be till late. Start construction, spring of 2020.
Okay.
Does the homeowner have full choice on who they would use to?
No.
Hire?
No. No. Since it comes from HUD at the federal level down through Iowa Economic Development Authority, we are required to follow the two CFR and all procurement. So there is publications in the paper. If they have a contractor that they would like to bid, we need to make sure that they are registered in the state of Iowa, have current liability insurance, and if their house is built before 1978, that contractor would also need to be able to have his, let's say, work practices certificate with the Iowa Department of Public Power.
Groundhog properties qualify?
No, homeowner occupied. No contract purchases either. The legalities get a little squishy for those.
Any other questions for Carla? If not, there's three things that we have to vote on with regards to this. The first one is I need a motion to approve the proposed targeted area for the 2019 Community Development Block Grant, Owner Occupied Housing Rehab. And that is the, there's the photo in your packet, and it's the three, I assume it's the hash lines.
Yes.
And that's the proposed area.
Yes. Within those red lines.
Within those red lines. So I need a motion to approve the proposed targeted area first.
Second.
There are a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? If not, we'll go ahead and vote, please.
Fluschner?
Yes.
Dirks?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Katz?
Yes.
Sasek?
Thank you. The second motion is the, is a motion to provide the income verification process at $100 per applicant for the development block grant.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. If, is there any other discussion? If, is there any other discussion? If not, we'll go ahead and vote.
Seaman?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Katz?
Yes.
Fleschner?
Yes.
Dirks?
Yes.
Baze?
Yes.
Motion's approved.
The last one is I need a motion to procure for the technical services contingent upon the grant award for the Community Development Block Grant for 2019. So moved. Second. There's a motion and a second. If there's no other discussion, we'll go ahead and vote, please.
Katz?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Dirks?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Baze?
Yes.
Fleschner?
Yes.
Motion's approved.
Thank you. And I think then the one other, what I was going to mention is then we will have a public hearing for the technical services for the contract in March 26th. And administrative services contract for March 26th. I have to also approve a resolution for committing the match funds and other resolutions to satisfy as necessary for the application. And then we'll need to authorize the signature form on March 26th. So there'll be stuff that will come back. Will you be back at that time, Carla?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And I just want to clarify, if I understand right, just so everyone's on the same page, the $100 per applicant, that's an expectation the city to pay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Of course. Okay. Just wanted to make sure.
Thank you, Carla.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the water supply well and transmission main improvements. And Randy, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. An amendment to the professional services agreement for the water supply well and transmission main improvements has been requested from JEO. This amendment is to add services related to the lawsuit that has been filed in connection with the project construction contract. The services include compensation, pretrial, and expert witness services. The fees for those are based, hourly based within this amendment with a not-to-exceed maximum currently at $25,000. The, I've listed in your memorandum the current standard hourly billing rates for the personnel that are, would most likely be working on this project. This brings the at-maximum amount, this brings the adjusted agreement to $383,312.50. So unless there are any questions, I'd recommend a passage of the resolution approving the amendment number one to the professional services agreement.
This is only if it goes to trial, correct?
Actually, there would, in all likelihood, be some services if it doesn't go to trial for pretrial consultation. That would have to be initiated unless it's settled immediately.
Okay.
Just to clarify, Randy, the not-to-exceed is this contract, there is the possibility that depending on the number of hours, there could be subsequent contract amendments.
Sure. Yeah. Depending on how it goes.
Did they come up with the $25,000 maximum?
They did. Yeah. It was a number to place based on your experience.
Is there any other questions for Randy? If not, I will need a motion to approve the resolution, amendment number one, to the water supply well and transmission main improvements, professional services agreement based on the hourly fees, a not-to-exceed maximum of $25,000. Fellow? Second. We have a motion and a second. If there's no further discussion, we'll go ahead and vote.
Baze? Yes. Fleschner?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Katz?
Yes.
Dirks?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Motion's approved.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the Iowa One Call Email Ticket Agreement. And release form? Randy, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city currently and has, since the inception of the Iowa One Call legislation, received a facility location request from the Iowa One Call system by fax transmission. As of December 31st, Iowa One Call ceased sending notifications by fax. They did, they do provide for a couple of alternatives to receive one call tickets, including electronic delivery or voice delivery. And considering the city's electronic receipt capabilities, we were recommending that those notifications be received by email. In order to receive those by email, One Call is requiring the approval of an agreement and release form. The release form generally includes the city's responsibilities and a huge liability waiver of the city, or by the city via One Call. But in any case, it's required in order to get one call notifications, which are required by state law. Unless there are any questions, I recommend approval of the resolution accepting the email ticket agreement and release form.
He's all going out mining, aren't he?
Who?
He's all going out with mining?
No, just the agreement.
Oh, just the...
We'll send them to you later.
Hold that midnight one. Yeah. I went up four in the morning filling out email tickets. Okay. I have to go ahead and make the motion to approve the resolution accepting the Iowa One Call Email Ticket Agreement and Release Form. Second. Oh, Councilman Fleschner, second. I have a motion and a second. If there's no other discussion, we'll go ahead and vote.
Katz?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Dirks?
Yes.
Fleschner?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Baze?
Yes.
Motion's approved.
Thank you. The final resolution this evening is the Carroll Public Library City Hall, Carroll City Hall Audio Visual Design Services. And Mike, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. OPN has submitted a proposal for AV design services at both the Carroll Public Library and Carroll City Hall. This work is really highly technical and you're sure we have systems that work properly and is, we're seeking really professional help in this area. In the proposal, OPN Architects is teaming with IP Design Services to complete the work. IP Design Services is a subsidiary of Alvin Engineering who completed the electrical plans for the two projects. The scope of work includes designing equipment and infrastructure at the library, including in the social stairs and lobby area, the community room and conference rooms, and then at City Hall in the council chambers, media room, and conference rooms. Additionally, they'll prepare bids and specifications for the project and assist in the bidding process with the city. And finally, they'll review the final installation of the project products at the two sites. The proposed two fees for the project is for the Carroll Public Library, $4,500 plus reimbursables of $2,800, and at the Carroll City Hall of $3,500 reimbursement of $2,800 for a total of $8,000 with reimbursables of $400 to $1,600. AV equipment is a planned component of miscellaneous cost area of the budget, which is currently below budget. So unless there's unforeseen items in that budget area, we do believe we are within our budget. So staff is recommending, Mayor and Council, a consideration of approval of resolution approving proposals for AV design at both the Carroll Public Library and Carroll City Hall between OPN Architects and the city of Carroll. There's two resolutions. That'd be happy to answer any questions Council has.
What's the media room?
That is basically half six. So it's how the council chambers interact and interface with that.
Will they design that too? And they could, they need to go there.
Correct. All the cameras and video recording equipment. And they've done a lot of the work in the design of it, through the planning, the project stop, and basically with the process.
I would assume one thing that would develop under this would be a good program to make so our viewers at home can not only see us but also hear us very clearly as well as the rest of the public. This would be the design for that particular part of the...
Yeah. And even beyond that, within, at City Hall in particular, putting in the right infrastructure where people with disabilities and people with hearing, there'll be a loop system beyond my knowledge base, but they can then interact with the hearing aids and actually they're getting audio from the mics, not just trying to pick it up from the sound room. So the system will meet all the ADA requirements.
Very good. All that with anybody? Are there any other questions for Mike? If not, I will need a motion to approve the audio visual design at the Carroll Public Library first. You want, it's two separate ones. Is it two separate agreements? Okay. So we'll do the Carroll City Library first. So, second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? If not, we'll go ahead and vote.
Haley?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Baze?
Yes.
Katz?
Yes.
Fleschner?
Yes.
Dirks?
Yes.
Baze?
Yes.
Fleschner?
Yes.
Dirks?
Yes.
Baze?
Yes.
Thank you. And then I will need a motion to approve the audio visual design at the Carroll City Hall with OPN Architects and the city of Carroll. So moved. Second. There's a motion and a second. Any other discussion? We'll go ahead and vote.
Katz?
Yes.
Dirks?
Yes.
Baze?
Yes.
Fleschner?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Motion's approved.
That takes care of the resolutions this evening. The next item is reports. And the first one is a, consider adding a family restroom, a mother's room to the Carroll Public Library. And Mike, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. During the design phase of the Carroll Public Library, there was discussions about having a family restroom. Really, from a budgeting standpoint, the decision was to forego that in the design. After additional review and discussion, there is a desire to revisit adding a family restroom and what's also known as a mother's room to the library. Both of these spaces are really becoming more common in library settings. And additionally, in fact, the city built a family restroom, two of them, at the rec center, really because of calls from our patrons. Staff has received preliminary pricing from Beatty Construction to add both the family restroom and mother's room. The costs will go up in the utilities now for the restroom, with the restroom being built either now or in the future, is $3,600. And the cost to build the restroom and mother room is an additional $17,099, bringing the total approximate cost to $20,699. The library board of trustees did meet and discuss this at a meeting on January 8th and recommended, Council, proceed with adding these items to the library project. Due to timing of the project, staff has authorized the up-ins of the utilities to keep construction moving. And the decision on the build-out of the restroom for the current construction project does need to be made timely as we are going to be running and impacting framing work within the library if we do delay action. Budget for the Carroll Public Library and Carroll City Hall did include a planned contingency of $362,088, of which $333,001 still remains. At this point, from what should be found and what staff and our contractor and architects can see, we do feel comfortable that we're going to remain well into, well, within our construction contingency, even if this is included. Obviously, if additional items would be found impacting contingency, we would need to make cuts in other places in the budget, which we still don't want to do. With that, Mayor and Council is asked to consider approving the additional family restroom and mother room to the Carroll Public Library, to the scope of the Carroll Public Library project. I would note that if you approve this this evening, moving forward, there will be a formal change order that would come down. We did want to, Council, to at least have an operator review this and weigh in toward before you added it as a change order to the project. But if you do approve it, we will move forward with this happen tonight. That'd be happy to answer any questions that the Council has.
What was originally in that space? Was that originally used?
If you look at the space in the maps, in the first one, which is, was administrative spaces, so it's not a user space. And basically, just it takes out some open office area and then some workroom area for the two members.
Jack, do you want it? The rec center used a lot?
Yes. We have two of them there. Not every day. Several times.
I questioned this when I first read about it. And as I thought about it more, as, you know, it's bad if you go out and you have need for space to take care of our children, not only my grandparents, but also as their children. You get pretty nervous letting a kid go into a restroom by themselves or anything. And then went ahead and talked to some other people throughout the community. This might just be more of a necessity than I had dreamed it was to really serve the people. I'm scared it'd be late and incur much harder costs later on. Yeah, I talked with Mike and Rachel about it. My, my first gut reaction was to, you know, do the basic thing, get the pipes there because that's, I didn't want to have to disrupt the library down the road if we had to do it. But if the pipes are there, now you can come in later and do it. Well, I also understand, you wait another year or two, your construction costs are going to go up again. Now, instead of 17, 20,000, well, it's 3,000 to run the pipes, 17 to do the restroom, so it might be 25 at that point. And so, and I know when I discussed it with Mike, I know the rec centers got them, that did not come with them originally and we put them in there and...
Well, it took years to get that done. And Eric, your wife did a lot of research on it, presented, and gave us all binders with information. And this was quite a few years ago. And a big factor, Clay alluded to it, like people were really pushing us and pushing Jack. It took a while to get it done, but was, a big part of it was the safety factor. And I think people just come to expect that we're, we won't have this and that it's, you know, they're everywhere, airports, where they're, you know, they're just, it's an amenity that people really appreciate.
I had to think about it after I talked with Rachel. And it's like, you know, the, just going on vacation when I was gone for the 10 days and just all this stuff, buildings we were in, much more prominent those facilities are, so.
They're really nice for people with wheelchairs and stuff.
It's real nice for any parent who's grabbed the ankle of the child going out from under a stall, too. Experience. Another issue when you bring kids of the opposite gender, I think.
Yes.
It's just an uncomfortable situation, so.
Single parents.
Nice to have that resolved.
Right.
As long as we have a backup plan if we go over your closing question.
Yeah, that was all the concern that I expressed about that one was, it's now all of a sudden if something else comes up, you kind of, you didn't, kind of lodge, but you know, if it's there and then get it done.
And that's the point I really appreciate with the trustees was, we're going to keep this on budget. And so, while we feel comfortable now adding it, it's one of those adds, unfortunately, that once we add it now, we can't take it away later. We can't add it later without, the cost is going to be probably double on us adding it. So it's, it's, it's an issue of, do you do it now at this price or do you do it later with more? But the issue is, we add it now, later we're going to make cuts and that's just a way to meet and re-frank with the trustees.
Yeah. They definitely, we're going back and forth, like they have their trustee variant and their parent brain going and debating the costs versus like this is a necessity, too. So we, we had quite a discussion about it and kind of weighed our options and what if we took this away or, you know, different things like that, too, so.
And then you add it later, the disruption that it's going to cause, because this, it's like in the middle of the building. It's not like it's on an outside wall or you get it right in the middle, so. And then we're higher operating costs for cleaning and many things.
If you approve it tonight, we'll move with it, but, but the change order will come. It may come next meeting, it may be.
Because there's walls going up already. They're, they're starting to, they're starting, the walls are going up, so.
All right.
If, is there any other discussion? If not, I'll need a motion to approve the addition of a family restroom and a mother's room to the Carroll Public Library, the scope of the Carroll Public Library project, an approximate total of twenty thousand six ninety-nine. Second. We have a motion in a second. If there's no other discussion, we'll go ahead and vote, please.
Haley.
Yes.
Fletcher.
Yes.
Dirk.
Yes.
Seaman.
Yes.
Katz.
Yes.
Base.
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you. The next report is the Carroll Recreation Center ADA West Side Entrance Certificate of Substantial Completion, and Jack, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The original date of the substantial completion for the Carroll Rec Center ADA Room was September fourteenth. On August twenty-seventh, brought forward change order number one, that was approved by council, and with that, it increased the substantial completion date to September twenty-eighth. Originally, that change order was, we had part of the sidewalk that was being done, we're keeping some of the old sidewalk and then putting new in. This made it all together, there's all going to be one poured concrete slab, so that was the change order that we decided on, we thought it would flow better, we wouldn't have two separate concretes changing during the winter months, it was all poured together, so it was a good addition, a good, good change order. The completion of the project was substantially completed on September, September twenty-fourth. We took down the barricades and our members and General Park was able to use the facility, the sidewalk on September twenty-fourth, so they met the substantial completion date. So I would ask the Mayor and Council's consideration approval establishing September twenty-fourth is the substantial completion date for the Carroll Recreation Center ADA West Side Entrance. Can I answer any questions? There is one outstanding item, the railings were not painted, the weather got too cold to paint the railings, but once the weather warms up, they'll come back and paint the railings black.
Did they do any internal work in that entrance? In, in that, on that west side, report that?
Yes, they moved the doors apart.
That fan in there is clinking, like there's no tomorrow when that fan turns on? That might not have been part of that project?
It wasn't.
Okay.
We've had, uh.
There's no one that turns on that fan, you can just hear it?
Yeah. And then you go on the east side and the north side, those fans are original of the building, so that is on a list.
Of maintenance.
To look at, yeah, and see if there's one more economic way of controlling that, but they make a big difference when you're in the cold, you walk into that area, they're nice.
Yeah. I, I wasn't sure, Jack, I just was up there a couple of weeks ago and I heard that thing clinking in there, and I didn't know if that was.
Any other questions for Jack? Not, I need a motion to approve September twenty-fourth, twenty eighteen, as the date of substantial completion for the Carroll Recreation Center, West Side ADA Entrance.
Salute.
Sorry.
I have a motion in a slow second. If there's no other discussion, go ahead and vote.
Fletcher.
Yes.
Dirk.
Yes.
Haley.
Yes.
Seaman.
Yes.
Katz.
Yes.
Base.
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you. The final item under reports this evening is the Downtown Streetscape Phase Nine Project, another certificate of substantial completion, and Randy, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Bating Construction Company has substantially completed the Downtown Streetscape Phase Nine Project. They did complete the concrete work on October twenty-second of two thousand eighteen, but due to extended delivery schedules on lighting equipment, they completed the lighting on December fourteenth, two thousand eighteen. Because of the size of the items included in the project lighting, we're recommending that that be the date established for substantial completion. The actual contracted substantial completion date was November twenty-first of two thousand eighteen. Bating Construction Company is requesting early release of retained funds pursuant to the Iowa code. There is labor and material to be performed, and there are a couple of undone items. Those include the seating inside on the project that just got later than, they could get it done this, this fall. So under the code, there would be retainage retained from the early release to cover the undone work. And that amount is currently estimated at sixteen thousand eight hundred ninety-two dollars. There's also a site punch list that will be given to Bating's to complete any work, undone work, and that is to be completed by May thirty-first of two thousand eighteen. So unless there are any questions, I recommend acceptance of the certificate of completion for the Phase Nine Project.
So that's enough time for them to get that seated?
Yes, in fact, the seating, permissible seating window in the spring ends May thirty-first, so.
When does it start?
It starts March, April first.
April, okay, that's what I thought.
What's the rush for them, what, to have this done?
Certificate?
Yes. What do they gain by that?
Well, part of, the state code requires, or one of the requirements for early release of retainage is that the project is substantially complete, and that can only be verified substantially complete by the council. So they're asking for, to establish that substantial completion so that they can request the release of retainage. On this size project, we currently have about eighty-six thousand dollars retained, and they have sixteen, seventeen thousand in actual work left to be done. So they would be released seventy thousand dollars.
They're reading?
That's their reason.
They're getting that, and we're still holding the sixteen thousand?
Sixteen, yeah.
Even though, even though we've signed off on this, we still hold that back?
Yes.
So essentially, they're getting paid for the work they've done.
We're holding the money until they finish the rest of it, correct? Is that?
Yes, yes.
Yes and no?
They get paid for the work, it's done periodically, but there's a retainage, five percent retainage on everything that they do. Then, that's the eighty-six thousand on this contract to date. So, you know, we, you know, before the law permitted early release of retainage, we would just hold that eighty-six thousand until they were done, is real impetus to get done, that's one thing. But that's been kind of taken away by state law, so now it's reduced to cover the work that's remained to be completed.
So the sixteen thousand, that, we will hang on to that?
Yes.
Until May thirty-first, basically?
Until they're complete, yeah. If they, if they finish before that, their payment will be processed.
I should say we did that out in the rec center, too, there was retained, we were holding it, this project was ten percent.
You got to go do that at night with those lights up there? It is like the neatest thing, you know, with those streetlights.
Oh, yeah.
Unbelievable.
Driving, yeah.
There's a few of them that are out, but I think the, you know, we can get that fixed, but still, I mean, just how much a difference that it made right through the downtown area. It's so much brighter, yeah. Really looks neat.
Are there any other questions for Randy? I'll need a motion to accept the certificate of substantial completion for the Downtown Streetscape Phase Nine Project.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. If there's no other discussion, we'll go ahead and vote.
Base.
Yes.
Haley.
Yes.
Seaman.
Yes.
Dirk.
Yes.
Katz.
Yes.
Fletcher.
Yes.
Thank you. I trust everyone's ready to the committee report. I was able to get Jerry to be the mayor pro tem again one more year. Thanks, Jerry.
Thanks, Joe, I'll celebrate.
Thank you.
It's real hard work.
Thank you. It was very difficult.
And then I remind everybody, we got our, we'll meet Thursday again up here for the first budget work session. Any comments from the council members?
I have one question for Rachel.
Yeah.
What's the attendance, how's it doing with library and new location?
Um, it is a little lower than usual. People are still finding, trying to find us. We do still get some calls asking where we're at. Talking from the construction guys, there have been people showing up at the old library, yeah, trying to return items, so.
Just dropping books off at the front door?
Yeah, and, yeah.
The big hole that's in the middle?
Pretty much, and they're like, can you return this for me? I'm in a rush. But it is a little slow, but, I mean, people are finding us slowly but surely, but, yeah. We're good.
You know, I'll, I'll make the comments, Mr. Mayor. It's awful nice to see things like the Community Development Block grant, the revitalization program, coming through and moving through to the Carroll City Council here. Carolyn and I both worked with the housing study that just done, and it's just good to see motion and things coming to fruition, so. Thanks, everyone, for your work.
Very good, thank you, Clay. Anyone else? Do you have any comments from the city manager?
The preliminary FY twenty-twenty budget was completed on Friday, Mayor, kind of know we have our budget meeting. I've saved this a few times during the budget workshops, I really do have to thank Department Heads for the work on this, and I mean, it is really improved out for, and this, they pull their hands off, so I just want to publicly say that. Public can view printed copies of the budget both at City Hall and the public library, they're available there. We did get the electronic version of the budget posted on our city website. You can go to www.cityofcarroll.com/finance. It's a really nice version of it, everything is linked, so you can actually click through it and it takes you right to the page you've been looking for, so that's a pretty handy version of, of the budget book as, as a whole. Budget workshops for the fiscal twenty-twenty budget starts, as Mayor noted, on Thursday. We will have our second one is planned for Tuesday, January.